Good afternoon, everyone. This is the Civil Service Commission. It's Wednesday, December 10th, 2025 at 2:30 PM. My name is Dottie Lofstrm, and I call this meeting to order.
I'm going to take roll call. Commissioner Lofstrm.
Present.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Arulapun. And Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Thank you.
And do we have any public comment today?
We do not have any public comment online. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make a public comment? No public comment.
Okay, great, thank you. I heard something. Did anyone catch what it was? Okay. So with that, we will move on to our first item, our first action item, which is approval of minutes. And assuming you've all read them, does anyone have any comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as written.
I can make a motion to approve the last meeting.
And a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that has passed. And now we'll move on to the report of disciplinary action. Ms. Goodman, thank you.
The report of disciplinary action for this month is, just has one item on it, an order of demotion out of the district attorney's office, and that has been appealed to the Civil Service Commission. So we will be looking to schedule that at a time when it is convenient to the county and to the representative for the employee.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, we can move on to our first presentation.
And if you don't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. I was going by memory instead of what's actually written here, so.
Yes, please. So if we can get a motion to approve the report, please.
Well, and then there's that, too. I'll accept a motion to accept the report of disciplinary action.
I'll make a motion to accept the disciplinary report.
I can second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's none opposed, and so with that, we've accepted the report of disciplinary action. Now, Ms. Goodman.
Okay, thank you. So we do have an update to provide to the commission and our attendees and the public. Sadly, unfortunately, Commissioner Lee has indicated he will be resigning from the commission. Not because he doesn't enjoy this, I'm sure, but because he is moving out of the area. So I just wanted to provide that update. I do want to take an opportunity to thank you, Commissioner Lee. You have been an outstanding commissioner. We've really enjoyed working with you. I personally have enjoyed it. I know how engaged you are, and when you are happy to ask questions for clarification, I can always tell when I'm confusing things, because Commissioner Lee will give me a little look, and it says, "I don't think I get this." So I appreciate you very much, and I very much want to appreciate the service you've done to the county through this commission, and we wish you absolutely only the best.
Thank you very much. Can I say something?
Certainly.
I would like to say something on the record, or to read into the record. But first, let me say it's by no reason or no means because I'm not happy being here. I'm actually moving to LA, so it has been a pleasure. I'm going to read something, so I don't get wordy. And I'll just, I put it into my resignation letter, and if it's okay, I'd like to just read it. That way, as my wife says, I get preachy and long-winded. So, it says, "As I conclude my service, I encourage current leadership with San Joaquin County to continue fostering talent by developing from within the existing ranks of public servants. This internal development focus should include seeking out potential individuals and actively building clear tracks of success to prepare them to be the next generation of leaders in our community's civil service. The commitment and potential within this organization are evident, and I believe nurturing internal talent will further strengthen the county's future success and commitment to efficient public service. I want to recognize the efforts of Jennifer Goodman and the HR team for working to ensure our classification system supports tracks for success of civil service employees within San Joaquin County. I would also like to thank Donna Strange and the staff for their administrative support and dealing with me, as well as I want to thank Supervisor Paul Canepa for allowing me to serve as his District Two representative." That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. That was a very thoughtful letter, and I'm not surprised, because that's exactly how you've been. You, most of what I was going to say, Ms. Goodman said, but.
Sorry.
That's because it's their true things about you. You've been engaged from the beginning, you ask good questions, you pay attention, you make sure you understand, you're not afraid to say, "I don't understand this, wait a minute, whoa." And you've been, you've just been an excellent colleague on this commission. So I'm really pleased I got to know you, and I thank you also for your service. Well, with that sad note, we'll move on to our first presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Sylvia Aparicio, Classification Analyst, and I will be presenting Classification Project 25005. The request before you is for the commission to adopt the recommendation to amend levels one through four of the Appraiser Series. Within the Assessor's Office, professional work is primarily performed by Appraisers and Auditor Appraisers. Appraisers assess the value of real property for tax assessment purposes using analytical skills developed through experience. All Appraisers in California must hold an Appraiser's Certificate issued by the California State Board of Equalization, BOE, and San Joaquin County Appraisers must obtain this certificate within their first year of employment. The core qualifications for Appraiser are set by California Revenue and Taxation Code and further defined by the BOE Guidelines, most recently updated in May of 2024. Considering the last update to the series was completed in 1999, a comprehensive review was completed. The revised minimum qualifications now align with all current BOE requirements and anticipate future updates. Physical and mental requirements were also adjusted considering the nature of work. While education remains an acceptable pattern, experience is also valuable for both internal and external candidates, so a substitution pattern was included for education for Appraiser one, or sorry, excuse me, for Appraiser two, three, and four. These amendments ensure full compliance with all BOE qualification standards. The final draft class specifications for this series were shared with SEIU on December 3rd, and no objections or feedback were received prior to this meeting. Assistant County Assessor Karen Johnson from the Assessor Recorder County Clerk Department is also participating, or here in person, excuse me, for any questions.
Thank you very much. So Ms. Johnson is here in person, you say?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. We really appreciate when you come down in person, very, very much so. Great. And I think you can have a seat, but it's good to know you're here. So does anyone have any questions or comments that they want to make on this classification revision? Nor do I. I thought it was straightforward and very clear, and so if there are no comments or questions, we can move forward with a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Classification Project 25-005 Assessor Recorder County Clerk.
I can second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, and the motion has passed. Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Johnson. Perfect, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Lofstrm, Commissioners Amy Brimmer, Human Resources. Classification Project 2513 is being presented on behalf of the Public Works Department. This project requests to adopt a new Geographic Information Systems Manager classification and to amend the Geographic Information Systems Program Manager. The existing Program Manager class will be reserved for assignment to the Home Department for countywide systems administration. This has been determined to be the Assessor's Office. However, other county departments, namely Public Works, have GIS Work Units, GIS short for Geographic Information Systems, with a need for specialized management support. The new GIS Manager class will satisfy this need, while GIS Program Manager will continue to serve in a countywide capacity. The characteristics in each class specification make this distinction. Human Resources provided the class specification to San Joaquin County Management Association on December 4th, and the association indicated they were okay with the class specifications prior to this meeting. We do have our Director of Public Works, Fritz Buckman, available remotely, should you have any questions of the department.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the Public Works Director's name.
Fritz Buckman.
Buckman, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buckman, for being here. Okay, same question. Does anyone have any comments, edits, or questions?
The only thing I have to notice, just, it's not impactful probably to HR, but on the physical and mental requirements, it says occasionally up to 20 pounds, as opposed to, it just says lift 20 pounds is 20 pounds or less, or it just seemed like it was worded awkwardly, but that was just my observation. And probably now saying it sounds better to me now, but I'm just wondering why we changed it from 20 pounds or less. We just put 20 pounds flat. Is that a limit, or does that, does that leave anybody in the way about if you just put 20 pounds solid? Or am I making sense?
Well, I see it, it might be a little.
It makes a limit on, it gives a limit to what someone's going to lift, an exact.
Did you see that "or less" is crossed off?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, I'm confused by your question, so.
It just seems that it goes, you're going to occasionally lift 20 pounds.
Up to.
Okay.
Right, and we did.
But so you're not going to lift more than 20 pounds guaranteed?
As a managerial position, I don't think so.
Correct. It previously read, well, the existing classification previously read frequently 5 to 30 pounds, and then occasionally 70 pounds. And so frequently was deleted, frequently 5 to 30 was deleted, and up to 20 pounds. So you're right, the "or less" was, it was changed.
Okay.
Up to 20 pounds as opposed to 20 pounds or less, which was the previous reading.
That's all I have.
Okay, anyone else have anything? I didn't either. I'm thrilled that we're moving forward with these GIS classifications, and it's really great to read. So with no comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the Public Works Classification Project, I mean, excuse me, the Classification Project as written.
I can make a motion to approve the Classification Project 25-013 for Public Works.
Thank you, and a second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye? No opposed, and so we have accepted that proposal as well. Now we'll move on to our third one.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Raquel Enong Steptoe, Classification Analyst. Today, I am presenting Classification Project 25010 for San Joaquin County Employees Retirement Association. San Joaquin County Employees Retirement Association requested that Human Resources revise the Retirement Financial Officer Classification specification as it does not accurately reflect current scope of work and required skills for successful entry into the class. This management-level class was adopted in 2000 and last amended in 2011. The revised class characteristics define the current level of work and distinguish the class from higher-level management. Typical duties are revised to show the core responsibilities assigned, which include authority for organizing, planning, and directing the operations of the finance unit. The minimum qualifications were updated to include one year of advanced journey-level experience in investment accounting, as this specialized knowledge is necessary to oversee and participate in the work of the unit. The physical and mental requirements were updated, as some of the language was not accurate. Human Resources provided the draft Classification specification to San Joaquin County Management Association on November 19th, and received no objections to the Classification specification prior to this meeting. Assistant Chief Executive Officer Brian McCleavy is present, should you have questions of the department. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question. I kept getting mixed up whether this person was a manager or not. In the, in the typical duties on page one, it talks about that they plan, organize staff, and direct the financial unit, and then under, in the new duty statement under class characteristics, again, it says, "This class manages day-to-day activities," but then I couldn't find any supervisory experience, and then when I looked it on the, on the tree, I could see that there was one accountant, perhaps, there's many, I just got kind of confused about it.
Assistant CEO for San Joaquin County Employees Retirement Association. This position is absolutely a managerial position. Currently, we have three accountants. We have two investment accountants. We just actually hired one investment accountant last month, just started recently. So it is a managerial position, and what we have found is that the managerial position was, was doing more of the actual investment accounting than supervising or managing, and that's why we are asking for an increase in both salary and also responsibility. I hope that helps.
It helped up until the last sentence. So, so you found that they were doing more technical work than actual supervisory, so this one brings the supervisory component into it?
There was a supervisory component to it, but this person will be doing more managerial work, managerial work, which is more planning and preparation, and also leading the organization in a way that a supervisor would not.
Okay, so more managerial versus.
Correct. Just, just somebody who's overseeing the work. We, I need, I really need somebody who's more forward-thinking, someone who's looking out at what are the kind of industry standards in this area, where we did not have that before.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Will employees know that? Will they understand that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. It's just a little, a little different take than what we usually see, I think, from, yeah, okay, well, that seems very forward-thinking right there, so that's great.
I think our intent is really to push a lot more responsibility down into the managerial level, instead of that responsibility solely resting on my shoulders. Because if you look at my request, a lot of that work is currently being done by me, which I'm trying to elevate the classifications within the organization.
Nice, okay, okay. Yeah, I'm so glad you were here, it really, it really helped.
Absolutely.
Yeah. What about my colleagues? Does anyone else have a question? Okay, hearing none, then we can entertain a motion to accept this Classification Project.
I can make a motion to approve this project, Classification Project 25-010. Give me a second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There's no opposed, and the project has passed. Thank you. And with that, we're going to move into our conflict for November 11th.
So as, as currently scheduled, and you can see on the, on the second page of our agenda, we have the commission dates for 2026, and the November date falls on Veterans Day, and so I'm sure all of us will not be here talking about classification work. So I believe that there are some options available that have been discussed. One recommendation would be Friday, the 13th, at 2:30 PM, or Wednesday, the 18th, at 3:00 PM.
Does anyone have any known conflicts at this time? I favor Friday as well. Okay, that was so easy.
Okay.
And while, while we're looking at the committee meetings, I had to pause to see if that's an actual agenda item later. Now that we are down to three, it's going to be really critical trying to get a quorum. We experienced that before. We are hopeful that, that the supervisors is able to appoint someone fairly quickly, but until then, as much as possible, try to all be here. I'm just giving you a super upfront notice that I won't be here May 13th.
Well, I will be certainly following up with the board members who have open seats, and we will certainly make sure that we're helping and encouraging them in any way we can to get all five seats filled.
Thank you, thank you.
Hopefully before the May date.
I know, but you know how time flies.
It does fly, and you know, one thing that we can consider, if we get closer and we don't, we can schedule a special meeting in place of that May.
Yes, yes, great.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So I think we'll, we'll try to be a little bit more nimble in that way in 2026, until we have a full commission, just to make sure the work of the commission can continue.
Yes, thank you. And, and yes, so, so everyone make sure and let Ms. Johnson know if you're not going to make it, or Ms. Strange, and, and we'll do the best we can, but it is, it is challenging when we're down to only three. With that, Ms. Goodman, I'm turning it back to you, I believe.
You're turning it to me, and I'm going to turn it over to Rachel Metzger, our Assistant Director. So one of the things we certainly always want to be able to do, and are happy we have some time to do today, is to provide the commission with a little bit of an overview on the civil service roles. And partially, this was a request from Commissioner Butler, being new on the commission and trying to make sure she understands what's expected in her role. So with that, I will hand it over to Rachel to give an overview.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We're not going to go over all the rules today, we're going to go over the ones that are specific to the commission. If you want to go over to the next slide, it'll show kind of our objectives. So I'm going to go over a brief overview, and I'm really going to focus and highlight on the rules and policies that are in our current civil service rules that the commission can actually expect to see as part of agenda items. But as an example, the next couple of slides are just all of our rules, just the titles of them, so we have a total of 22s. And I'm going to go right into a couple of status definitions that are common for you to hear. So when we're doing probably most commonly, things that are pertaining to potentially formal discipline or even classification studies, we have employee status definitions that are defined in our rules. The most common are these three right here, where we have a probationary employee, and these are probationary employees where they have not gained permanent status with the county. This is what we typically talk to our managers and supervisors about being the last phase of the testing process. This is really to see if the employee is going to be successful in the position. And so during this probationary period, which for our county is one year, they have that opportunity to be evaluated regularly to determine if they're going to be successful in the position. After that one year, the employee then gains what we call permanent status, which means they then have property rights to their position. And so typically, once this occurs for a civil service employee, if there are any disciplinary actions that are taken, it would have to fall under our Civil Service Rule 18, which we'll go over a little bit later. And then our third common status is exempt, and the status of these employees. And then, our third common status is exempt, and the status of these employees are where they are not considered civil service. They're non-classified, and these classifications are either part-time, temporary, or contract. We also have what we call at-will exempt employee statuses, which are typically our department heads, assistant department heads. And those positions are actually listed in our ordinance, county ordinance as such. So, if they're not listed there, they're considered civil service. And not that you don't know what your role is here, but just a real quick slide on the commission, that typically, this is made up of five community members appointed by our county board of supervisors. We know when we meet, and you are the authority that is responsible for the oversight of our civil service rules. So, even though there are some rules, I'm going to go into detail about where there's appeal hearings, or things of that nature that come to you, if the county is also looking to make any amendments to the civil service rules, those type of things would actually come here as well. They're approved by the, first, the commission, and then they go to the board, after usually a lengthy process of meeting and confer with the unions. So, the one thing I do want to point out is that the commission does not have authority to designate salary. So, being that the majority of the work that you see agendized is classification study requests, oftentimes, you will hear where the subject of salary may come up, but that is all negotiated with the unions after a classification is accepted. Okay? So, Civil Service Rule 3, Classification Plan, is actually the rule that covers our classification study process. And just as I previously mentioned, all the civil service classifications are adopted by the commission, and we ensure through that process that they define the duties and responsibilities. And whenever there are classification studies, either to create a brand-new classification to the county, or if it is a request to study an existing employee, to see if they're appropriately classified. Those requests typically come from the departments during the budget cycle. Doesn't always happen that way, but typically, that's when we see the biggest submittal of requests by our county departments. Civil Service Rule 4, there is one component that is mentioned in here for employment standards. Rule 4 typically covers the application process, but there is a section in there that talks about the fact that some classifications, I don't think anyone on this commission has seen one yet, but if there is ever a classification that is determined to be arduous, which means we've determined, based on the physical, mental requirements of the position, it is such that would require a physical exam, arduous physical exam, prior to being able to move forward, to be in the position. Those are classifications we define as an arduous classification, and that is something we have to bring to the commission to approve, so that it's added to our list. And those designated arduous classifications do require that successful clearance prior to appointment. Civil Service Rule 8 talks about certification processes and appointments. And one of the sections in Civil Service Rule 8 talks about nepotism. So, we have a policy that states that, you know, a department head or appointing authority cannot promote, transfer, demote, or take any action, really, from an employment standpoint, for relationships by blood or marriage within the third degree with family members. And this can also include in-law relationships. So, a portion of this rule talks about, and we have had these, they're few and far between, but we have on occasion seen where a department head can make a request to the Director of Human Resources when there is an in-law relationship that is within the third degree. And they can bring it, if it's supported by the Human Resources Division, we bring it to the commission to make a recommendation that this is an unusual or circumstance that you would not normally see, in which we would waive the nepotism for an in-law relationship only, in which they can proceed with the process. For a little bit of backstory on that, we in Human Resources, we already look at the nepotism. It's actually a question on our applications. So, it does not prohibit an ability, first, for an applicant to apply, and to go through the testing process, even to get on the list. It's when we go to certify and refer to the department, we'll check that nepotism. And then, if there is a case where that nepotism exists within the third degree, they are notified and given the opportunity to provide any clarifying information on that. Okay? All right. Civil Service Rule 12 talks about our leave of absences, covers a lot of the protected leaves, education leaves. But this rule, when you see it, is when it is a compulsory leave. So, these are the fitness for duties. So, there is a question in there where if a department believes that based on, you know, information that they have, that they provide, they can provide a request to the commission, to request that you approve what we consider a fitness-for-duty request. And that fitness-for-duty then allows Human Resources to coordinate on behalf of the commission, to have a third-party medical provider evaluate this employee, to determine if they are fit for duty, or they can perform the essential functions of their position with or without accommodations. All right. Civil Service Rule 16, this is automatic resignations, kind of our AWOL. So, if this is, if an employee is absent for three consecutive working days, and with a no-call, no-show, no communication whatsoever, there is some language in there in which they can make a request to the Director of Human Resources and to the commission, if they can reinstate within their position. If they don't have regular Rule 16 reinstatement rights, which means they were left in good standing, and they had property rights to the position, if it was within a up-to-three-year timeframe. We have this in here because there may be instances where we don't hear from an employee because something tragic happened, maybe they were hospitalized, or they didn't have a family member who could potentially reach out and let us know the status of what has happened. And so, we have that appeal process in place. If this occurs, and if it is approved by the commission, then Human Resources goes back and actually undoes the separation and treats it as a leave of absence, so it looks like there's no break-in service. All right. And Civil Service Rule 18, so this is when we have our permanent status employees who have property rights to their position, and there is an action taken of dismissal, suspension, demotion, or reduction salary. These are the reports that you see as part of our regular agendas, in which the process at the department levels is employees given what we call a notice of intent. So, they're being given notification of the intended action. The employee then has a right to a SCELI hearing, and then, following the SCELI hearing, a order of action is taken, and that typically is what has the effective date. And they can then, within a period of time defined by the rule, can request to appeal to the commission or arbitration, and that is what we report out to you every commission meeting, if we have any of those.
I happen to know what a SCELI hearing is, but I'd want to know that, does everyone know? Could you explain it real quickly?
Yes, absolutely. So, and I actually need to change that to SCELI meeting. We just went to CalPura, and they said not to call it a hearing. Essentially, it is a SCELI, the SCELI officer is an unbiased third party who is not involved in any of the intended action, or the disciplinary action. It gives an opportunity for the employee and their represented union, if they want to provide any additional information or clarifying information in regards to why they may disagree with the intended action to be taken. The SCELI officer is not an investigator. Their role is not to, you know, re-investigate anything that has already been done. It is just an opportunity to allow the employee to provide additional information for the SCELI officer to then consider and report back out to the department who is taking the action. And the SCELI officer can have as part of that recommendation whether or not they agree with the intended action, or if they believe that there are some aspects that are lacking that maybe a different intended action can be taken. The appointing authority then has, they have the right to be able to accept that action and change the order that will be taken. So, maybe, for instance, maybe a suspension should get changed to a reduction in pay instead, something of that nature. Or they can, if SCELI officer agrees, they can move forward with the order. And Civil Service Rule 19, this is a violation of rules. So, it's a very small rule, but essentially just says that if a employee believes that the county or their department have violated any of those civil service rules, they can, we typically try to solve it first at the lowest level, so they can bring that to their immediate supervisor. Depending on what rule they're saying is violated, we'll probably determine what level it starts at, but we always start at the immediate supervisor. It can then, within 10 days, they have, the immediate supervisor has times to respond, and then the department or appointing authority can also be someone that the employee reports this to, if they're not satisfied with the immediate supervisor, and again, to the Director of Human Resources. And they can ultimately take it all the way up to the commission. So, if they continuously get a response that they are not satisfied with, once it comes to the commission, the commission then takes it under advisement. You may hold a hearing on it, depending on the report that Human Resources provides, but either way, the findings and decisions are final by the commissioners. We don't see that one very often, so... And then, Civil Service Rule 20, so this is our discrimination prohibited policy. This rule, although it is in our civil service rules, applies to applicants and all employees, not just our civil service employees. And essentially, with the commission, what happens is any time an investigative report has been done under Rule 20, and the complainant is not satisfied with the findings, or if they are not satisfied with the appointing authority, who may not have agreed to take the remedial action that was suggested, they can appeal to the Civil Service Commission. This typically happens in two phases. First, the commission receives the request for appeals, and in which the complainant typically is here to basically plead their case as to why they believe that a hearing should occur. If an appeal hearing is granted by the commission, then it's scheduled for a date, usually a next regular scheduled meeting that is amenable to all parties that are involved. And at that point, it is a closed hearing, and if the hearing is heard, the commission has the authority to be able to either uphold what the original reports had stated, or you may provide direction to the county in regards to a different outcome or matter, how to address. And then, it's the last slide. Any questions while we move here?
Yeah, I have a question. So, you went over it, but I don't remember it already. So, so much of the work we do here is, in fact, looking at classification projects and revisions, amendments. Would you go over that slide again?
Sure.
And just make sure we understand that one.
It's at the beginning. Okay. So, yes, this is probably the majority of what the commissioners see. And we have, Human Resources has a classification team. Essentially, what initiates this process is the department. That's usually the most common reason. However, the county, especially if we have classifications that are very old and need to be refreshed, to have more of current depiction of what the roles are, then we can actually, Human Resources can determine to initiate a class study as well. There are, as mentioned previously, there are two primary studies that you'll see. One is just to create a brand-new classification to meet the needs of a department, or maybe several departments. Or there's what we call an incumbent study. And for the classification studies, when it's an incumbent study, that means there's an existing employee in there, a department has requested to evaluate and review whether or not the employee is appropriately classified, based on the duties that they do today. Those tend to be a little bit more in-depth. We have what we, we have the employees fill out a position description questionnaire. Depending on the complexity of the role, classification staff may actually also go out and do desk audits, and sit with the staff, do a whole day of sitting with the staff to actually see what it is that they do. It also involves comparing, oftentimes, what other counties, we have 10 comparable counties, we can look to our neighbors to see if they have similar classifications, and what levels in which they are at. And then, as part of the classification study reports that you get in your packets during the commission meetings, that, with the incumbent studies, you'll often see that breakdown. You'll see where, you know, these are based on the position description questionnaire, percentage-wise, this is what the primary responsibilities of these positions are. And then, you'll see some comparators about existing classification that they're in now, other classifications that we have within the county, whether or not any of those other classifications that we currently have in the county will work or suffice to meet the needs, or if it's something where we have to create a whole new classification. When we do that, then we're going to bring it to you to kind of show what the organizational structure is, how these positions fit, how many incumbents are going to be reclassified as part of this process. And I didn't mention this, so I will add this now. If the employee is not satisfied with the results of the study, they can also appeal or request for appeal. So, they can come back within the next, by the next commission meeting, they have that period of time after the classification study is adopted, into which Human Resources will notify them that here are the, here were the results, you're either going to be maintained or reclassified. You have until the next commission meeting to appeal, should you wish to do so. Oftentimes, we see where the employees don't, but, because we try really hard to be on the same page before we bring it to you, but, you know. And then, if the appeal occurs, then they will, it's similar to Rule 20, where we have kind of a two-step. It's a request for appeal, and then, we can get direction from the commission. And we have had that in instances where maybe the commission can give direction to say, we would like you to go back and re-study, or re-look at this, after hearing from the study incumbents. I will say that if an appeal occurs, everything kind of freezes for a moment. So, the employee maintains the classification that they are now until the outcome of the appeal. And that is the case also if it's a group of incumbents. So, if we have, you know, more than one incumbent, and maybe one's okay with it, and one's not, if they're being studied together, then we have to wait until the final outcome for the appeal.
If I could just add a little bit, you know, on the classification plan, I always feel like this rule and the process of classifying positions is really foundational for the rest of the employment structure, right? Because by the rule, it tells us we need to define, you know, we're organizing like work together under the same job specification, and the rule actually says we need to have characteristics, and definitions, and typical duties, and qualifications, which is that format that you see, you know, consistently, right? You see that every time we bring a class specification to you for review. And so, that kind of ends up being really the foundation for things like our recruitment process, right? We've identified the minimum qualifications, and the knowledges, the skills, and the abilities that are needed to perform successfully in that role. Well, those become our testing criteria. So, if we say you need to have knowledge of accounting or management principles, that's going to be a subject area of the civil service exam that we create to test our applicants. So, we apply those MQs as a screening, and then we identify those knowledges, skills, and abilities for our testing components. And then, those are also, once that person does get to that probationary status, that first year that Rachel talked about, then those are the areas that we're looking at assessing their performance as part of their performance evaluation. So, all of those, to me, the cool part, the cool part of the classification system is, this rule really is very foundational for the rest of the work we do. It's how we determine how we need to hold people accountable for satisfactory performance, and so, it really does drive a lot of the rest of the work when it comes to our employees.
I think that was very helpful, that whole foundational part. And so, I find it puzzling that the Civil Service Commission is actually called in at this point. I perfectly understand all the other, Rule 20 and everything. But, so, what really should we be looking for when we're looking, I mean, what's expected of us when we review these?
Can I just, to go on that, because I don't even know what the jobs are sometimes. I'm like, how am I supposed to say that, yeah, this is appropriate for this job? You know, or that's what I'm, because I've looked at county jobs to try to apply before, and I'm like, well, why? I can do this job, and I don't have this, you know, so...
So, some of it really goes back to some of the, oh, we're going to get really technical today. All right. So, we have our merit principles that are really what, in our county, we are basically authorized to conduct our own merit system, right? Some counties, the state conducts it for them, but we are authorized to conduct our own here, and your commission is ensuring the work that HR does is compliance with the merit principles, which are all baked into our civil service rules. So, the merit principles say things like, you know, you have to hire, promote on merit, on, you know, on the person's abilities, not on favoritism, not on nepotism. It's kind of the foundational piece for our whole process. Sorry, I just lost my train of thought there. And so, as a practical matter... And so as a practical matter, so we get, even though we have these, you know, these underlying principles and we have the rules, we get to apply some practicality to the system because we have to have some way to determine if an applicant holds those qualifications to do the job. If we get 1,000 applications for a job, which we don't so much these days, but we used to. We used to get a couple thousand applications for a job. We have to have some way to create what we believe is a reasonable minimum qualification that from the experience of our subject matter experts in the departments say, yeah, somebody who's going to walk in to be an accountant really has to have a degree in accounting because we can't teach them those principles of accounting when they get to the job. So we're always trying to create qualifications that are that minimum threshold that you need to have to walk in the door. And then once you are in the door and you're in the job, of course, we're going to train and develop people as much as we can. So we have the qualifications that we believe are reasonable from our subject matter experts, from what our other counties are doing. That's why we're always looking at other organizations and how they approach it to, but we have to have some measure, some way to, so it doesn't become arbitrary. There are some organizations that say, you can have any experience and any education that would qualify you to do the job, that gives you the background. That's really hard when you have applications to determine, you know, what that really looks like.
Just another question, only because I've experienced this when applying for jobs. You know, say you need a business degree. I have a law degree, like, and even my grandpa's like, isn't law just as good as a business? I'm like, well, I can't get past the first stage because I don't have a business degree. I have a law degree. So how do you determine, you know, I just see that some candidates who want that position that are qualified, because it specifically has a business degree, you're taking out those.
Yeah. It honestly will somewhat vary by the positions themselves. There are some cases where the, a degree area is not specified. It'll say, maybe we prefer, and the one that comes off the top of my head is social worker. We prefer, it's desirable that you have a degree in social work, but you, I think you can have any degree and be a social worker. And then there's other areas where a specific school, and at some point, Amy may need to come up and help me here if I start to, if she's thinking she has more to add because she is very good at this, that a specific background or experience or knowledge base that you earn from specific degrees are beneficial. There's sometimes it's related fields. And, and it is something that we do look at when we do amended specification because it's from a philosophy standpoint, we don't really want to be excluding people over something like your, your example.
Yeah, I mean, just from personal, there are some of like, oh my gosh, why are they told they're not qualified?
And that's one of the things I've found over my career. It is the very first point of conflict most people have, especially if they're not used to a civil service environment that is so structured and sometimes rigid, bureaucratic, maybe. So, because we are, most of the time, the public is used to this concept of, well, I don't have exactly what they're looking for, but if they give me a chance, I can, I can prove that I can do it. And I think, you know, like from a logical standpoint, well, yeah, we, we, there are probably a lot of people who can be successful, but because we want to make sure we're hiring the most qualified for the job. If we, if we have created this, you know, pool of candidates, you know, through those qualifications and we're able to fill the position, then typically unless there's something that's really considering, you know, it's an artificial barrier, then we would likely would, would continue that as long as we have adequate pools. There are times where we've had to look at qualifications, say, you know, we're not getting any applicants for this. What are we doing? What, we've set the bar too high, maybe. And then we would make adjustments. And you would see those as a commissioner, you would have the ability to approve those. But sometimes it's through communication with the departments. Sometimes it's, there could be legislative changes that make us change things as well or other just kind of best practices in the, in the world that we live in, this public sector world.
I want to add to that. In the GIS one we just reviewed, I was pretty impressed with it. So GIS was just coming into geology when I was in school. And so you've asked for major coursework in geography, GIS, computer science, information systems, economics, engineering, architecture, environmental science, which you could argue geology, mathematics, business administration, or a related field. So I think you've done a good job on this one for sure.
Yeah. Not because it says a related, but there's, there's a few that just specifically pay business degree. Because it's so narrow.
Yeah.
Amy just might have something to add since this is what she focuses her professional career.
Right, no, so, and, and trends tend to ebb and flow as well. And in government, probably no secret, tends to be a little bit behind trends. And so what, what we do try to see and, and apply is that currently, we want to have what's not called, what we refer to as artificial barriers. And so through the process of job analysis, and you'll hear us referring to that a lot. So job analysis really is supposed to arrive at the qualifications to set someone up for success at entry into a class or a particular level within a classification series. So we do try to call out, maybe one of the trends now is that we would call out more general areas of study that are not specific major degrees, but those particular areas such as environmental science or maybe even just something a little more broad. So hopefully, or related field. Sometimes a business degree may be specifically required, but that, that should have been and our efforts are. And part of why you all have a role in this is because we do collect data from many, many sources to do our job analysis before we get to minimum qualifications, is to arrive at minimum qualifications that, that reflect back to that and should not have artificial barriers within. And that's what our efforts are here. You know, and, and again, with the trends and the ebbing and flowing of, you know, at one point, you would have candidate pools of 2,000 applicants for certain types of positions, probably extreme there. And now not so much, and so.
I can give you several examples from early 2000s.
That's right. Yeah, probably sheriff's office potentially. And so it is okay and acceptable to raise the bar, as Jennifer said, if it relates back to the work that is, is going to be done and does agree with the job analysis that's conducted. But we do need to justify too. So your question about why are we even involved with classification, it might be a little unique. Every civil service system has different actions that are required of their commissioners. Our civil service system, for one reason or another, requires you to approve class specifications. And so, I mean, unless you want to take it to the board and propose to change the, the rule.
That's why I, because I, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, never get passed with her, you know, even to be in the community.
Yeah. So for specifics, we would probably take that offline, but the, the rest of the discussion would be that it should be collectively, whatever requirements we have collectively referring back to setting someone's for success at entry into the role through the job analysis process.
If I might throw you guys a bone real quick. One of the things that's helped me in understanding my responsibility as far as classifications is your expanded definition as to why you're doing the classification and sort of let that guide me. When I'm looking at, you know, whether or not we're going to pass a classification or something. But the other advice I would give you, Commissioner Butler and, and everybody is, as you know, I'm not afraid to ask a question. Never leave a question unasked. Even if you realize after you ask it that it was probably the stupidest question in the world, so what, ask the question. But on that note, since I do have a mic and it's green, thank you for building those bridges to get people who are already in the system moving up in the system. And the reason that I, it's very near and dear to me is because for about 10 years solid, I was a project manager with, for a back hall department, telecommunications. And my education is a high school diploma. And I sat in a room full of engineers from AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile. And I gave them a run for their money because I knew the work that I was doing. So that's why reclassifications are so important to me, so.
So I will just, probably going a little off the agenda, but I will just share with you the, you know, the county has been celebrating their 175th year. And as part of that, the board chair asked each department to make a presentation to the board at one of the board meetings. And, and Human Resources just got to do ours yesterday. And so I'm, I'm going to ask Jen Zell to send you the link to ours just because I, well, I'm proud of the team, they did a great job. It does talk a little bit about, you know, your, your role as well. But one of the things in it, we had the opportunity to share, kind of, you know, the county's motto is greatness grows here. And so kind of along what you're saying, giving people chances and bridges. It is definitely, you know, a very conscious thing that the county works on is making sure we can promote from within. And we were able to highlight one of our team members who started as a part-time clerical assistant and is now one of our HR managers. And she spent a lot of time at the hospital before coming to Central HR, but she was the, you know, employee of the year for San Joaquin General Hospital 2015. And Rachel and I both started as clerical extra help, you know, and moved up the ranks. And there's lots of stories like that in the county. And it is something that really does bring great service to the county because we can actually tap into this great community. But it also is something that we can be very proud of because we have all kinds of those stories throughout the county, the great ambassadors to the benefits of public service and working for San Joaquin County.
Well, thank you. I think we have concluded with the overview, unless someone's got a burning question. If you have a burning question, by all means, okay.
And if, if you don't mind, Chair Ross Offstrom, I would just like to add that, you know, thinking about this, we did, and we did share this with the chair, that we would like to in 2026, at each of our agendas, schedule a different rule for review just so that we can kind of get into some of those more details than you likely see all the time, give you a chance to ask questions. And so we'll, we'll review them all even, we'll probably prioritize the ones